Evening. The July 21st, 2021 meeting of the West Springfield Planning Board is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, I must announce that anyone intended to take the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide his or her name and address for the record. And we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made part of the record of the meeting and the original or copy must be submitted to the committee before there will be any discussion regarding that document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts, simulation, video presentations, and the like, as well as letters and written material. Pardon me for one second, please. I got a response. No, I didn't. 6:10. James E. Belize. Site plan review, application for demolition of existing structure at 1457 Riverdale Street to allow for expansion of the car vacuum facilities at 30 Wayside Ave. With associated site work and improvements, the subject properties are located in the Business A zoning district. Do we, can we open both of them or just not really?
Technically have to wait till 6:15 to open the second one.
You got the floor. Go ahead with that one and we'll roll into the second part.
Good evening. I'm Jeb Belize or James E. Belize Jr. And I've got Danny Turgeon from Fussin' O'Neil here. And our plan, and then I'll let Dan go through specifics, is to raise the building that you see there and then basically close the driveway and run the vacuums the extent almost to where that big, big tree was that, that we took down, leaving intact the parking lot to the left on the corner. We end up with 30 vacuums, but a lot more room per vacuum and a lot better circulation for parking for customers.
Now that, I, oh, there it is.
So just a brief interruption. If you turn on your monitors in front of you, you can see.
And I should mention, I have my son Matthew here with me as well. My wife doesn't think I'm competent anymore, so she sends him with me.
Smart woman. So the building you're taking down is the Thai, the old Thai building?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is an existing plan of how it looks currently, and there's a couple items that we'll need to address for enabling works. One, as Jeb mentioned, is the raising of the existing building. That's probably the biggest item. We also have to demo the existing parking lot, which is to the left of that building. And another item is we propose to close that access to that existing parking lot. So we're working with Mass DOT to get the utility permits required to do that. And there's also some existing planting, I think shown in the number three, that we'll also need to demo to enable the works. I'll just move to the second plan. So this is the proposal of works. You can see the extension of that parking lot. And it might not look like it, but it's actually a reduction in pavement. There's also a stormwater basin that's going to be proposed to the north of the site that will help infiltrate that stormwater. We also have landscaping that'll be going in that is going to tie into the existing landscaping. So we wanted to make sure that we had similar species, similar locations, and we, we didn't detract from what was already there. And you can see the vacuum units on the east, sorry, the western side of the site, on the south and the north. Those are all the proposed units that'll be going in. There's some retained units on the southeast. And you can also see how that access point, kind of where number seven is located, has been removed. And there's one more slide that I'd like to show.
Dan, if I can be rude, just clarify. So on the existing area, we removed the vacuums that would be against the driveway.
Excuse me, Jeb. You have to come to the microphone so that people can hear. Sorry, I'm not, uh, thank you.
So on the, on the existing area to the east, the vacuums will run across the entire front on Riverdale Street, but as you may recall, it was pretty tight before. So we removed the vacuums entirely on the, call it the side that would be against the driveway along the car wash. So in other words, people won't have trouble getting access or backing out of the area now. It was just a little bit too tight. You get somebody with a big pickup truck or what have you. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeb. There's also a few light posts that will be required for that parking lot extension. Then one more slide. These are some preliminary renderings of what those vacuum units may look like. And that wraps up the visuals I have. If there's any questions, happy to answer those.
Wow, you're putting up all those buildings on the other side, too? That's nice. Oh, sorry. I've got nothing.
I'll move.
I just, I just need the spotlight is what it is. I just want to point out, because you may not notice, so the, those pictures, those are awnings. And our plan is, and they're very good looking, very pretty, they're just like a mesh awning. So those will probably go up, let's say, April 15th and come down November 15th. And it's just really with a rope, you know what I mean, type deal. But it makes a huge difference in the summertime with, with people. So again, just a great addition, I guess, to the, to the site.
Thank you. Anybody? Sue?
So where do they go in and out? Just in that back area?
Yep. There's one access route that's existing, and that'll be maintained for access to the extension.
I like that better than where.
So if they come out of the car wash, they kind of pull a right turn and go into the, and then a left into the?
Absolutely. It provides great access to, from the car wash.
I just like it that they're not going right back out onto Riverdale Street. I like it that they have to, you know, follow the little path. I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, there's two routes, kind of to the south right of the screen and the wayside that they'll be able to get back onto Riverdale.
I apologize, apologize if I missed this. The parking lot to the left. What's happening with that?
The one all the way to the left outside.
Closest to wayside.
Yeah, yeah. That's just existing. Nothing's going to happen with that one.
Okay. Have you had something?
Yeah, I'd just like to know, is the, is this still free to the public?
Yes.
Say that again?
Particularly the venue.
I was wondering if it was.
As long as you don't use more than $50 a year, you're all set. Anybody else? Open it up to the public? Anybody in the audience got any questions, concerns? I forgot Allison. Allison, town comments?
So the DBW had a couple of standard comments that have been incorporated into the suggested conditions. The mayor who's here tonight wrote his support, and that was all for comments.
Thank you. So...
So at this point, you can also open up the special permit and maybe handle them together.
Yeah, then we can vote at once. All right. So we're going to open up the second part of this. 6:15, James E. Belize Jr., special permit application in accordance with 300-5.3, Table 5-2 of the zoning ordinance for the expansion of a car vacuum facilities at 30 Wayside Ave onto 1457 Riverdale Street. Subject properties are located in Business A zoning district. Again, basically all the stuff we just heard, right? There's nothing to add on your end? Any questions on your guys' end?
No.
Anybody out in the audience got any questions, concerns? Okay. So we need a motion to close. Do we do one at a time or both? Can we do both?
Um, well, I have them written out separately, and if you're going to use mine, then you should do them separate.
All right. Motion to close the public, the site plan review?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion? Or in favor, closing? Another motion. Move to approve the special permit for the expansion of the car vacuum facilities at 30 Wayside Avenue onto 1457 Riverdale Street. In approving the special permit, the board makes the following findings. The vacuum facility will, will be compatible in type and scale and adjacent land uses and with the character, I think I just messed that up, uses and with the character of the neighborhood in which it is located. The facility will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. The facility will constitute no significant hazard to abutters, pedestrians, or vehicles, nor constitute a nuisance for reason of excessive air, water, or noise pollution, and the facility will be in the conformity with all applicable zoning ordinance requirements. So before we go any further, that, that was for the special permit? Actually.
Yep. So you really don't have to close the public hearing before you make the motions to approve, so it's okay.
So everybody remember what he just said for the next one. Go ahead, Jay. Next one.
They're opposite here. Got it. Move to approve the site plan for the demolition of the existing structure of 1457 Riverdale Street and the expansion of the car vacuum facilities of 30 Wayside Avenue with associated site work and improvements subject to 17 standard conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Site plan review approved. Now let's move to special permit. We'll take that motion, Jay. So moved, that's the one I read first. Okay?
Second.
Okay. Sorry for the confusion. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Both of them are approved. You're all set.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. So I am going to request a five-minute recess, if that is okay. Anybody have a problem? Okay. So I don't know how the, Mr., Brian, can we go into a five-minute recess, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, Allison. You did, you did such a nice job writing these up, and then I read them and you ordered them written instead of by what we actually wrote.
We went to the Congress with Andrew, who was playing years ago, and they said, you don't have to close the public hearing until you make a motion. Once you make a motion, hold on it, have to make a motion. And Andrew, we have the formality, just to make it clear with the audience, but it's okay if you don't. So then, is the public still not allowed to speak when you make a motion? Right.
Correct. Putting them on the mound was beautiful. Yeah.
I like that, so they know. Yeah. It's good to see it, but if you don't, it's not allowed.
Yeah, well, we have a pat of the house because of the reason.
Yeah. So. 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 Okay, Brian, you can do your countdown if you'd like.
You're good to go.
Okay. All right, we're back. Sorry about that, West Springfield. We're going to move real quickly to the 6:00 PM and 6:05. Unfortunately, due to some not-so-good circumstances, the applicant's not going to make it tonight, requesting a continuation. Allison, what, what day would that be in time?
August 4th at, there isn't. Uh, 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Nice job, Jay.
Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay. So that is Salmar Rilati, special permit and site plan review continued to August 4th at, I'm sorry, 6:00 PM. Thank you. All right. Is it 6:20? It's 6:20. CSX Transportation, site plan reviewed to allow for the expansion of existing gravel storage area for terminal operations with site improvements, including fencing, stone, and concrete dolly pads at the property located at 151 Day Street, Industrial Zoning District. This is continued from July 7th, 2021. Guys got the floor?
Good evening. Richard Histrick with CSX. We're here seeking approval of a redevelopment project at 151 Day Street for additional parking for our facility operations for the intermodal business unit. That plan we reviewed last time includes relocation of some existing operations, grading, drainage improvements for the parking area that include a concrete dolly pads to support those chassis and trailers and containers there, new drainage for the site, and some lighting, as well as perimeter fencing. I think there were, there were a number, we've worked with the stormwater department, those comments had been addressed. The conditions that were given, we were fine with. We had a discussion last time with regards to litter and trash on CSX's right-of-way. Some photos were shared at that time that were from the end of February, I believe, was the email date of those. CSX had responded to that. Unfortunately, we didn't have all the information to share with you, but we went out in March and April and cleaned all of that trash up, including bringing in two 25 cubic yard dumpsters to get rid of the trash. So we were responsive to that. Unfortunately, you know, myself and the team that we had wasn't up to speed on that particular instance. I went out today to look at things. Unfortunately, there is some dumping occurring again. And there's some mattresses, some shopping carts, bags of trash. It's not things coming from the railroad. Unfortunately, it's illegal dumping. Our team has been in contact with the mayor's office, and we'll be meeting with them over the next couple of weeks. We don't have a definitive date, but early August at the latest, to sit down and discuss CSX's property, the conditions back then, you know, the cleanup efforts we've made, the ongoing need for attention to these properties, as well as what can be done between CSX and the town, if anything, regarding illegal dumping.
So again, just, I mean, some of the members went out. I had a long, in-depth conversation with Maurice.
Yes.
I'm not sure. I don't think he's here, is he?
Maurice is not here.
Very pleased with his responses. I feel for you. I mean, you know, we could clean that up and someone could drive by and dump another mattress out there. Unfortunately, we all live that in different areas of town. All we ask, as far as I'm concerned, is maybe just put a little extra effort into keeping it that way, keeping it clean.
And I, I think that it's now on CSX's radar, and as I said, we're meeting with the mayor's office to make sure that we have a good relationship there regarding at least that issue.
And again, the conversation I had with this Maurice was pretty in-depth, and I was very comfortable with what he said. Gave me his personal contact information, the whole nine yards, so I'm okay with it. Personally, just hey, as a big business, maybe just be able to clean up a little bit more when you see it.
Understood.
That's all I ask. I'm content with everything else at this point. Anybody?
I guess I would just ask that if something is brought to your attention, is that something that maybe you could jump on immediately if you see these, you know, if we, if we send off a notification that there's a lot of dumping that's taking place in areas that haven't been mowed or the plantings haven't been? The one thing that I did notice when I went over to Bridge Street today was there's a tremendous amount of overgrowth on the side of the street where the railroad tracks are. And I'm, a part of me, and again, I know this isn't really your problem, is that maybe people feel like if they throw it on that side of the road into the overgrowth, you know, maybe the overgrowth will overgrow the, the trash that we're going to be forced to look at. But I don't know if that's something that you guys can chop down, and maybe that would help address the situation of the dumping over there. But you know, if we bring these things to your attention, maybe it's just something that you'd be able to jump on sooner than, you know, having us reprimand the company.
I, you know, I wasn't, I was there, she brings up a good point. Maybe, maybe bring it back to them, hey, let's maintain the property a little more as far as mowing the lawn. The trash isn't yours. It's not your fault. It's there. But she brings up a very good point, that if it was a cut lawn, maybe they wouldn't, wouldn't be so likely to dump it there. Maybe just bring that back as a, as a concern or comment, hey, let's mow the lawn once a month instead of once every two years.
Sure. We'll take that back.
Anybody else? Jay?
No, I, I echo that. I mean, there's, there's only so much you can do to prevent people from illegally dumping. We have that problem, as you mentioned, so yeah, I agree completely.
Good? Anybody in the audience got any questions, concerns? Mr. Mayor?
Just to address the board. Two things. I think this is a good project overall because freight has gotten busier and unfortunately because the changing of the hours at CSX Yard, there's containers now that are kind of abandoned for the night on the side of the road. I've talked to some businesses down there who do work, and all along Western Ave, there's containers that are just left there till the next morning when the yard opens. So if this allows more parking actually on CSX's property, fantastic. That's great. I will say, I've heard the whole story about taking care of the property before. I've been here for over seven years now. I've talked to Maurice personally. I also had his cell phone number. And it used to be much better when they had police on the property that we were able to contact with. But you know, we have sewer easements on the other side of the rail. We've been strung along now for years trying to do work on that. There's, you know, the trash has been better because it was, been picked up after we complained. We usually do have, because of COVID, we have the sheriff's department come out usually twice a month and clean up a lot of the property as well. But I drove down Memorial Ave myself, and that's one thing we complained about, and it's still not mowed. So, and I know we're not going to fix that all in this, and I don't want to hold up this project because overall I do think this project is good for the community. But yeah, I've kind of heard the same things for years now, almost a decade. And I'm not going to hold out hope that it's going to get any better. I just do hope that CSX wants to be a better neighbor and clean up their property, especially Memorial Ave. We have a great project in Florence Bank, and right behind Florence Bank is six-foot-tall weeds. And it's like that until the big, once a year, occasionally, we'll get them to come out and mow. But it's a bad look for the town. That's a huge section on Memorial Ave that is abutting CSX. And from Jiffy Lube really down to Florence Bank, it's not maintained.
So my question to you is, isn't there ordinances that you have to mow your lawn and maintain your?
We do, but because of the way they're, that different holding company owns this, or like this wasn't bought from Boston Albany Railroad back in the 1800s, it's hard to tie down who actually does what. And we don't want to be fining people. We just want them to take care of their property and be a good neighbor.
Well, not to beat a dead horse, but if we've been beating a dead horse for so long, maybe we ought to start fining them. I mean, we, why, why can't you?
Hold the projects.
Huh?
Hold the projects. I don't want to have to do that.
All right. The, the point is, we wouldn't even know who to find, because they're just going to point at somebody else because some account.
The taxpayer. Whoever pays the property tax, it should be, they should be fined as a property owner. And you know, then we'd use that money that we fine them with and hire someone to cut the lawn if they don't want to do it. But I mean, again, I made my point at the last meeting. Sometimes you get so big, you start to act like government, and it becomes an issue. Kind of glad he was here for another project, but I agree. I don't think we should hold it up. Hopefully, the point's well taken. I will follow up with Maurice tomorrow and let him know where we stand. But little dis, little discouraged to hear what he said. And you know what? If it was your backyard, not you personally, but your backyard, you'd feel the same way. So enough beating a dead horse, let's move on. You guys got anything else before we? Did I open it up? Anybody in the audi, oh yeah, I did. Anybody else in the audience? Any more town comments?
No.
Motion to close the site plan review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, closed.
Move to approve the site plan for the expansion of the existing gravel storage area for terminal operations at 151 Day Street, subject to 11 standard conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Any discussion? Nothing? You're all set. Please pass on the information to whoever you need to pass it on to. Thank you. Okay. So, wow. A long night turned into a short night. So we've got A&Rs, please.
So the first A&R is 167 River Street and 20 Rowan Oak Avenue. They are just transferring a, a small portion of 167 River Street to 20 Rowan Oak Avenue. You do have a motion if somebody wants to take that.
What? What, what is this? What's the motion, Allison? What's that? Let's see what happens. Let's see. So this?
So this is River Street. There's an existing building here. This piece is part of this parcel. There's a weird dog there. They are, was transferring this portion to this lot.
This is, where is that based?
Pick it up.
I don't know. It's 167? Yeah. Move to endorse the plan of land for 167 River Street as a pool required under subdivision control because of the fix of conveyance that changes the size and shape of lots in such a manner so that no lot affected was left without the required 50-foot of fresh.
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
All things approved.
It's one, it's my line. So. 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 So.
All things approved.
So the next A and R is actually the Belize Car Wash that we were just reviewing there, combining the, what was the Thai restaurant building lot with the existing car wash lot, so that it's all one property. And again, approval is not required under subdivision control because it's a consolidation of land, not a division. So just need you to make the motion and then sign the plan.
It's just a smart way to do a problem. Move to endorse the plan of land for 1457 Riverdale Street and 30 Wayside Avenue as approval not required under the subdivision control because it depicts the consolidation of two existing lots.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved. Okay, acceptance of the minutes. Have a motion?
Second.
I need the motion first, buddy.
She's so fast.
I thought that was a motion.
It sounds as if she knows what I'm about to say.
Move to approve the minutes of the July 7th, 2021, meeting of the planning board as prepared.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved. Any action items or any new old business, nothing? Wow, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, opposed. Good night, West Springfield.